Call the town of Oliver Springs, August 17th, council meeting to order. Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass. Kenny Brown.
Here.
Chris Van Hook.
Here.
Eric Holland.
Here.
Thanks, brother. We got four out of six, we got a core.
All right, Mr. Van Hook, you lead us somewhere breakfast.
Our Father, we offer praise to you, thanks to you. And we ask you that you would bless this council as we deliberate and give us your wisdom, to bless our town and our citizens, to bless our nation and all the elected leaders and appointed leaders that serve on all levels of government and all aspects of government like police and fire protection and public safety, health. We pray for our service men and women at home and abroad that you would give them peace and strength. We ask that each one of us would seek you and follow you and hear your soft whisper of a voice that we would join you in your work in order to bring honor and glory with you and further your efforts here on earth. I ask all these things in my son's name.
Do your best. Mayor. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval minutes from the August 10th meeting. We already noted a change or two, is that correct? We have a motion. I'll make one. Make a motion, we have a second. A motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call Joe.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown.
Yes, sir.
Chris Van Hook.
Yes.
Eric Holland.
Yes.
Bass.
This time, is there any citizen not come forward? And if so, state your name and who you are, what you're, where you're from. Come on, Mr. Snow.
All right.
Been a while since I've seen this guy play ball against.
We had some good ball games.
We did.
Right here and this one right here too.
Yeah, for sure.
So, good evening, I'm Justin Stone, the new president, CEO of Rhone Lights. Been with Rhone Lights for a little over six years, serving as VP of Economic Development. And May the 11th, I was selected to be the new full-time president of the organization. So, I brought some annual reports tonight, okay? I'm not going into details, but the county had a great year last year. And more importantly, inside cover I wanted to show you is that our team's right here, okay? We got a staff of nine. So, if you guys need any support or to help promote anything, I want you to keep this in mind, because that's what we're there for, okay? We can help support you guys. We have a few handouts, and we'll pass things around. I want to mention three things. The first being Rhone County's first ever national night out, which is an event where the community comes out to spend time with law enforcement agents, seats and first responders. The county, we've done this before in the county, the individual scenes have done it, this is the first time the entire county participated. We had over 35 agencies and community partners participate in the event, including Oliver Springs Police Department. The Tennessee State Fair goes August 17th through the 26th, and you can see a picture on the handout I gave you of the exhibit for Rhone County. All 95 counties are represented at the Wilson County State Fair. And Stacy Wilson, our tourism director, drove over last Friday, and you can see she did a phenomenal job setting up the Rhone County display. Last thing I want to mention, our elected officials barbecue for Rhone County officials is September 26th at 5:00 at Kingston City Park. If you've not received an invitation yet, you should get one in the mail, okay? So, we invite all of our elected officials out for a good time of fellowship, networking, and picnic, and much deserved recognition that you deserve. So, that concludes my report, and I'll answer any questions that you guys might have.
Look forward to seeing y'all October, or September 26th.
Yep.
So, thank you, Joe.
Thank you for the time. I want to leave the people these annual reports here.
Thank you.
You guys will take them. Thank you.
My name is Cecil Pro. I live at 720 Dartmouth Road here in Oliver Springs. Two, three weeks ago, I got a call from East Tennessee Development District. They wanted to come down and look at our museum. They'd been watching the progress online. They came down and they did several interviews, and they told us that we had been nominated for an award at their September meeting. We've got another meeting that'll be scheduled soon to do some additional interviews, and then they want to video the museum. So, we'll wait and find out what's going to happen there. You shouldn't have gotten an invitation, and Corey, you should have gotten an invitation.
Yes. Thank you, Cecil. Anyone else this time? Mayor update. So, last Friday night was an incredible success. Our first ever movie night had around 250 people show up. I know Robert Miller and his wife and granddaughter, is that correct, Robert?
Might as well be, we gather most of the time.
For sure. Yep. And so, it was good seeing you out there. David Laxton, Chief Laxton, Rusty, man, the park was looking, looked amazing. So, thank you for everybody that was involved, and to the police department that just gave tirelessly to make the event happen, and we're looking forward to the next event. And I know, speaking of the next event, I know October Scott Festival is coming up here shortly. And I know that my uncle Jimmy Stilner is working on a car show for downtown that day. It's my understanding it's going to be quite the car show. And we're also working on a 5K race. Scott Nation is working on that for us. I believe it's been quite a while since we've had a 5K. Believe maybe eight, 10 years ago, that was part of the October Scott Festival events. So, we hope to bring that back. It's not set in stone, but we're trying. And then, obviously, the festival itself, and so we're going to try to promote it and do what we can to make it a success. So, that's coming up. Also, I said in the last meeting that going forward, we would have financial statements available to the public and for all council members at the second meeting. Those are available. If you want one, Corey, you can see Corey, he has them. Because, again, I want transparency. I want for you to know what I know. I want everybody here to know what we know, right? No more shooting in the dark and what are we doing, how are we looking? Everybody's going to know. So, those are available for anyone that's here. And the last thing I have is this. Spoke with Senator Jaeger for about 10 or 15 minutes today, very good conversation about a couple of issues that, maybe three or four issues, that we hope to address within the next coming year. And I'm excited about that. I'm excited for our town and about the possibilities that we can bring to the table that Senator Jaeger can help make a dream or a vision into a reality. So, with that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Corey Jenkins, or should imagine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of water and sewer items I want to go over real quick. High service pump number two replacement project is completed at the water plant. That was completed by Designing and Protective Services Incorporated. We have their final pay request, $116,860. This will be paid from our ARPA funds. Second part, recommendation of award for the 2022 Oliver Springs CDBG Water System Improvement Project. That is the 2,200 residential water meters. Coren Main LP was the low bid, $1,079,488.59. The issues of Coren Main qualifying their bid have been worked out, so we're ready to recommend that for award. GIS, we have a letter to authorize GRW, the engineering firm, to purchase products, software from Esri. GRW is going to complete the GIS portion of the mapping. And that's going to be tied into a water system model. Now, if you remember a couple of months back, we talked about a $16,000 charge. We're looking at having that paid through our ARPA funds as well. One thing that just come in yesterday, if you'll hand those out. This was a second letter from the Tennessee Board of Utility Regulation. And this is off the initial letter for the financial distress. On July 19th, 2023, Tennessee Board Utility Regulation reviewed the town of Oliver Springs pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 7-82-701. Entity is under administrative review initiated by the Water and Wasteful Finance Board in March 2023. Entity is timely contracted with a third party to carry out a rate study as requested by board staff. Board staff has been unable to finish the administrative review report, but will update the board at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be in October. Based on staff's representations and recommendations, the board orders as follows. The entity will contract with a third-party professional to study the feasibility of a merger between the entity and utility system of the city of Oak Ridge, in addition to any other surrounding utility systems. This study must be completed and submitted to the board by March 31st, 2024. Like I said, this letter was just received yesterday, so we will proceed with that. That's all I have of the water. Do you have any questions about that or any of the other projects?
What does this mean?
You're hearing more and more about regionalization, and the goal is to have one big utility district in just certain areas. And they're trying to push, you know, the smaller utilities into merging with the larger utilities. And the main issue is utility districts with financial distress. Yes, we've had issues the past three or four years, but I mean, our problems are fixable. And I mean, we've taken the steps really the past year to fix those issues. Been the water loss, we've got the water loss down to 64.5%. We've raised rates the past two years. So, I mean, we've done everything the board's asked.
I'm saying, is this, would this include water and?
Yeah, this would be water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Entire utility system, yeah. But like I said, this is just feasibility study, nothing forcing anybody to do anything.
This be a plus, or no?
No.
No, it would not.
No, it would not.
I think what it means is the Tennessee Utility Board is going to pressure the town and force the town to merge with the city of Oak Ridge.
Correct. Would that mean that city of Oak Ridge was pumping, fixing their water leaks?
Yes.
In other words, there would be no more water board for Oliver Springs.
And Oak Ridge has a dubious distinction of having very hot water and sewer rates. If you think it's hot right now, wait until we merge.
We don't, do we have a choice?
No.
No, not if they, not if they step in and order it.
No. That's the reason why we implore upon the water and sewer guys, we got to get this in order. If we don't, this is coming. And there's nothing that me, or Corey, or Joe, or anybody on this can do about it.
And I also think that even if we got our water rate down to 30 or 40%, they'd probably say, we don't want this to happen again, you shall merge.
Right.
I mean.
Possibly.
To me, they wouldn't go to the time to make us pay for a study if they're not inclined to order it. Now, whether or not we could appeal to the state representative senators to put pressure on this bureaucratic organization not to merge remains yet to be seen.
Correct. Would this be limited to Oak Ridge? What about Hammond?
We could, it would be.
It would be Hammond, it would be Kingston.
Problem with Hammond, Hammond's too far away. Because what would happen is Oak Ridge would probably run a water line down the four lane from Hilltop into Oliver Springs. There's a water line there anyway, but it's been separated by a couple of feet. It's put in the flood of 1967, as I recall. And it may need to be reworked, even replaced for that matter, because it's old now. And then, the city of Oak Ridge will take over our water and sewer plant and operations. In other words, it would be, the old city of Oak Ridge Water and Sewer Department is running the jurisdiction of Oliver Springs for water and sewer.
Well, I know we had an agreement with Hammond to connect us on that end. Is that in our group?
Calm.
So, with Cumberland.
We studied about it, but we never implemented.
They were going to fund it, is my understanding.
Well, Cumberland is in the same boat we're in right now. They're looking at a forced merger as well.
And one problem we have, when you consider problems, we have both water and sewer and the Anderson County Water Authority, with whom we work with now and buying surplus water and use our lines to service their lines up in Marlowe and Dutch Valley, is that the Anderson County Water Authority didn't have a sewer system. Coming utility district didn't have a sewer system. So, see, they would be coming in without the expertise to run a sewer system.
Well, this document specifically mentions the city of Oak Ridge. Just to point that out. Just to point out the obvious, guys.
Would our sewer then go the same place we get it now?
Yeah, they just come back over to the station.
They would take it over.
They would just basically run the operations.
Well, if they wanted to send their sewage to the Oak Ridge plant, Oak Ridge had to pump it uphill. And, you know, it doesn't flow uphill, it's got to be pumped, it flows downhill. So, I'd say they just look at our plant and we modernize it or whatever they do to it, and whatever the cost was, the rates would go up.
My concern is people think that what we did last week was a lot, they haven't seen anything yet, if, if there were to be a merger. And we're doing everything we can to meet the criteria that the state has set for us, which, that's all we can do.
Yeah, I mean, we, guys actually removed a two-inch galvanized line from underneath Highway 61 today. So, I mean, we're doing our due diligence. Any more questions?
Well, the guy was here from, from the study, interviewed. Did everybody get interviewed?
Yes.
Not everybody, not all of them. They did not follow through with the phone interviews, but.
I thought they were going to do a follow-up in like.
They are going to go follow up, yeah.
Several of us have already been interviewed, so I mean, can't be shocked.
No. General fund. October Sky Festival is coming up, October, Saturday, October 21st, 2023, out front on the table. We do have the rules and information for vendor booths. If you'd like to reserve space, go to the website of www octoberskyfestivaltn.org. Deadline for registration is October the 13th. Late fee if received after October 13th. Vendor fee received by October 13th is $50. Late fee after October 13th is $100. Like I said, we have the booth exhibit application out here on the front table. Cecil, could you have anything to add on that? All right. Second thing is what Cecil talked about just a minute ago, the ECC Development District, 56th Annual District Celebration, September 26th, 2023, at the Hilton Knoxville Airport. What you have is your invitation to there. Kind of off again what Cecil mentioned, the Oliver Springs Historical Society will be recognized at that event. All right, for the past few months, we've had a lot of discussions with some of the workers, you know, residents, men of the council, and the mayor, about the Parks and Recreation Department, and more, forming a committee. So, when I go back looking through the ordinances, there is already a Parks and Rec Commission that's formed by our ordinances, and there's actually a full-time Parks and Recreation Director that's formed by our ordinances. So, the first page, C20, IMD Parks Recreation Department, is hereby a statute of Parks Recreation Department administered by a Parks Recreation Director under the authority of the city manager. City manager shall appoint the Parks Recreation Director after confirmation from the town council, who shall serve at the will and pleasure of the city manager. Parks Recreation Director shall be appointed based on educational and experiential qualifications. Now, I have not talked to Eddie Perkert, who handles the Parks and Rec stuff now. Just out of respect, I want to talk to him first about all this, to get his, kind of get his input. If you go through the second page. Chapter two, Parks and Recreation Department, I'm not going to read through all this right here, but it goes through the creation of the general duties, the compliance of the director, recreational areas and opportunities, recreation programs, purchase and concession stands. Page two, the powers and duties and qualifications of a park director, and in your park rules and regulations. If we flip back to page one, February 7th, 2013, Title II, Boards and Commissions, this is where your recreation advisory commission is formed. Now, the reason I'm giving you this stuff right now is we're probably two months out from actually forming a committee. What I'd like for you to do is just read through this stuff, because we can change these ordinances, or amend these ordinances. I know they were created back in two, some of them were 2007, they were amended in 2013. Bottom of that page two, I will get into membership organization real quick. Recreation Advisor Commission will be comprised of five members, all appointed by town council. They shall be residents of Oliver Springs or have an entire, or active role in recreational activities within the town. One shall be a member of council, he or she shall be appointed to a one-year term. Remaining four shall be appointed to two-year terms, and all terms will run from July 1st to June 30th. Members shall serve without compensation. Commission shall have one regularly scheduled meeting per quarter, and special call meetings as necessary. Jump down a little bit. Membership shall, for members like the chairman, secretary for one-year terms, mayor, city manager, park director shall be exespeccial members of the commission and shall meet with the commission at their meetings. So, why am I doing this? Our parks are being, this is not a knock one bit on any of our workers, or anybody that does a move or anything down there. But, I mean, we are not utilizing our parks like we could and should. A lot of the work that's being done down there now is from, you know, just residents, just volunteers. And speaking of those volunteers, hundreds of thousands of dollars of material, equipment stuff has been donated. My big thing is getting all entities together on the same page, going in the same direction, where we can really utilize those parks, not just our head park, but I mean Carmichael Park, Red Bull Park, and all of them. I know there's two different entities, one being the Athletic Booster Club and in the youth club. Both of those entities have their own funds. Well, between those two and us partnering our money to get, I mean, there's a lot more we could do down there. Lot of stuff being donated, I'll go ahead and drop, I mean, Home Depot's done a ton of work down there. I know there's pallets of the rubber mulch down there, ready to go on the playground. And they've donated their time, material, Rogers groups and nothing. With the Eddie paving, the asphalt they've left over from jobs. I mean, they come down here, look at the interest. They're the ones that done that interest at no cost. So, I'd like to start that process of forming that commission.
And I'll say this, you know, in the town of Oliver Springs, let's just be honest, let's have some real talk here, real quick. We have very few things that we can be very proud of. That historical society is one of them. Beautiful, magnificent. Arrowhead Park, Carmichael Park, they're beautiful, and we need to utilize, or not utilize it, we need to make sure they're being utilized properly, correctly. I'm going to tell you, just like with the movie night that we had, 250 people showed up, it was packed. Go down there on an average ball game, or through the night, through the week, when they're practicing, baseball, softball, football, that park is packed. That park gets used a lot, right? And so, we need to make sure that, you know, we're investing what we need to invest. I think, like you said, Home Depot last year was $25,000, and this year, they're looking to do it again, but this time, they're looking to bring volunteers, 30 or 40 volunteers to help with the next project. You know, so we need to, our crown jewels, we need to make them crown jewels. I mean, we need, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's, so, I'm in, I'm on board with the council.
Do you have any questions about that? Again, what I'd like for you to do is take these ordinances, call me right here, let's mark them up, let's go over, say, in a month from now. And in the meantime, if you've got any questions, please call me, come see me, whatever.
And it's just interfere with their school. When they have ball games.
Well, just like the lease agreement, all the school, PCA and stuff.
Yeah.
Has, they take priority over.
They take priority, okay. And that's when football practice, they practice there or they practice on the other side?
They, at the park.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it wouldn't be interfering with them, with our softball tournaments?
No. No, they're, I mean, the Athletic Booster Club would be one of the entities, you know, involved on this, Eddie.
Okay.
So, I mean, we'd be getting input from all, from all sides.
That's good, that's good. On board.
Anything we can do to enhance the park is probably the quickest way that we can reach the most of our community members, because people with children are going to be down there. I mean, so this, this really deserves a lot of consideration.
Yeah.
Because we, I mean, it is a small town, and we don't have as much to offer as a town like Oak Ridge or whatever. But we don't, we need to maximize what we have.
I believe last year, they said they had over 700 kids involved in.
I don't doubt it. When you go down there, go by on Saturday and see all the cars, it's amazing.
And I'll give you this, I talked to a guy, lifelong co-filled resident yesterday, and he was super impressed with how well Oliver Springs Youth Club is run in terms of football, because his son is playing for OS this year due to hopefully not having enough kids, and came down and was like, I have nothing but accolades for the park, how well it looks, how well things are run. And I agree, I mean, our kids, they're our future, and I'm all in, so.
One other thing to add on the parks side of it, Red Bull Park, I believe that contract, and Cecil will be able to help me with this right here, I think that went into effect maybe December of 2011. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there, a lot of upkeep. That's one of the parks we've kind of neglected. So, we need, we need to review that project, that contract, and make sure we're abiding by that. Do you have anything to add?
There was a grant to fund that $35,000 enhancement in 2011, but the project never to get finished.
So, at some point, you need to follow up, follow up on them.
It was $35,000 in 2011, that's 12 years ago, so, you know, I was like, what?
Wasn't the money spent to the contractor, and the contractor disappeared? Work never was completed.
Well, we paid the contractor before you ever started the project.
Yeah. He never did any much work, so at that point, whatever, I would think, whatever is done now would have to be funded independently by the budget or by grant money. independently by the budget or by grant money, if grant money might be available. And I would stand corrected because our former mayor Crowe might have a better memory about it than I do.
No, it's, uh, the grant, uh, and it was part of that T V A, uh, issue that, uh, was back 2011. So, it wasn't a federal or state grant, it was a T V A grant.
Okay.
But, uh, one of the contractors saw, had a heart attack passed and the other one decided to file bankruptcy.
Where do we stand right now with Carmichael Park? Corey, how's it, how's it looking out there? I need to drive by there a moment.
Well, um, every other Friday, um, I'm meeting with Reverend Benin and Mr. Frank Curtis here. We're going over what kind of work needs to be done in the future there. One thing we've talked about doing is upgrading the entrance to that park. I know there's been a lot of people that use, um, go in that park after hours at night, tear stuff up. So, that's the only thing we're looking at doing is, is upgrading that, uh, that entrance using natural boundaries. There's a hill on one side, a creek on the other side, so. They had issues with A T Vs over there. So, I mean, there's a lot of work that we can do that's not going to cost a lot of money to do that. But, uh, like I said, meet with them, get a lot of good information from them.
I think that families, I mean, prices are so expensive, you know, groceries and everything. People don't have a lot of expendable cash right now.
Yeah.
And our parks are something that we can offer families an outing, you know, something that they can go to, where they can entertain their children and feel good about.
One other thing before I get into the finances. We probably need to start discussing the fall cleanup dates, uh, just so we can start getting, um, information on the water mills. Rusty here. I don't know when we've done them in the past traditionally. That's something we need to go ahead and start discussing at this time.
Some years, we've done it before the, uh, the festival and some years, we've done it afterwards. Sometimes when they did it before, they didn't get finished, uh, before the festival. And it always takes a lot of prep, uh, by the city to get prepared, uh, for that festival. So, it might be wise to wait till afterwards.
Yeah, knowing that, we probably need to look to after. When's the festival? About Saturday, October 21st. So, we can go October 23rd through November 10th.
It can be set by the executive population, by the mayor, by motion and second of town council.
I suck it. Those are made for the.
I said the third works always that they like to pick up. They'll take from me and sit down, probably get in that, uh, just put it from next year. That's always kind of held it up too.
Can you check on that rusty?
We have trucks now and they don't, I don't know when there's a set. So, depending on when they're just set.
Can you find out tomorrow or, um, just let us know when we'll get it set so we can sort of advertise it?
The only thing that we, that we have going that week would be you have Matrimon's Day. That falls on Friday. Be that Friday, been served Friday? November 10th. So, that'll be, that'll be fine.
Yeah, cause it wouldn't start till 23rd. And we'll be over with the first weekend, first full weekend.
Yeah.
November 10th.
Yeah.
Aren't most of our employees trying to help get ready for October's, I mean.
They do.
We, so that kind of takes us, we can't really schedule it before October's die where if everybody's helping get ready for October's die.
Correct. Correct.
Generally, it takes a full week, uh, to get prepared for the festival.
Something might be wrong after the festival.
Yeah.
So, would you like to tend to, we said.
The town looks horrible with trash piled up all over the place when we're going to have maybe 10,000 visitors.
Do you want to have it earlier? Have it, have.
Had it earlier last year.
What if you had cleanup like and you, you were finished with cleanup the week before you need to help with the festival? I mean, what would that work?
We could, October 9th to 10th.
We just want to make sure.
I know that.
Leaves of.
We got leaves picked up?
Yeah.
We've got leaves, yeah.
Could you do, could you do a week for the festival, before we help the festival? And then do a week after? Is that even an option?
Or wait until November. In that way, maybe people won't have trash piled out of the street during the time of the festival.
People tend to put it out there just whenever they need to put it out there, out, out in our neighborhood and it just lays there until it gets picked up.
Yeah.
If we did, uh, this end of town, uh, before the festival, then we could do the other end of town after the festival. Cause this end of town is what's going to get.
Right, yeah. Yeah. That may, that, I'm just thinking, how can we make it work to where you have, you know, you want it to look as nice as possible, I totally understand that. So, maybe you have to pick up down here.
Yeah.
And then have pick up out our way at different times.
In favor of that.
If Corey thinks it will work.
Okay. Well, let's, let's find out when the truck's available.
Yeah, let's do that.
Dates are and then we'll set it, so.
And our next meeting will be September the 7th. So, that still gives us plenty of time.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
To be on festivals, yeah. So, that, we'll, we'll check into all that.
Anything else, Corey?
Yeah, let's get into our finances real quick here. And everything should be in order the way we had. Your first sheets, this is your budget versus actual. Here's the sheets here. Yes, we'll go through every one of our accounts too, I'll go through them fairly quick. Uh, your one, ten account, your general fund. This is your year-to-date to, this is June, uh, 2023. Big things you look at there is your property taxes. Were over. Your local sales tax was slightly over. And what you want to look at here is percentage of, of budget. So, if you see anything above 100%, that means you're over budget. Now, that's a good thing for your revenues. That's a bad thing for your expenditures, which we'll get to that in a second. Local sales tax from state was under budget. Your wholesale beer tax was under budget. Go to page two. Everything else is fairly, fairly stable there, so let's go to your, uh, your expenditures, three to 110, you have a fund. Now, this is, if you see anything over 100%, that's bad. So, you're seeing multiple, multiple, uh, accounts here that are over, over 100.
What's the deal with sanitation down there on the bottom?
That's the transfer of your sanitation fee. That's where you're not collecting enough sanitation fees to cover. Right now, Place Connections charges less than 1,487 customers at 1020 per customer. In June, or July of 2023, we only collected 1,466 garbage paying customers. So, and I've got to call in, Two Ways Connections, our new representative, his name is Utah, and didn't get to talk to him for very long today. But, we need to figure out, is that a set of, is that number set for the whole year? Or do we send in the number of garbage collecting customers that we collect every month? I mean, cause you're on.
We're paying for people right now that don't live.
Yeah.
That don't live there, so we're paying for somebody else's garden that's not theirs.
So, that was, that was your 35,000 transferred there to cover the sanitation.
Hey, Corey, I'm just curious.
Yep.
The mayor is sitting at 116.32%. How's that? I don't spend nothing. I mean, literally, I donate everything. They wouldn't give me a check every two weeks, I donate that too.
You're probably looking at subscription services and licenses and stuff. Yeah, that is exactly what you do, but with your payment, there's no gas in that.
Yeah.
I mean, there's.
This is for June, so this is last fiscal year.
This is the last fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
This is for 2022, 23. And I could have printed July up, but it didn't have a budget in there, you could see zeros across two here. So, that's, we get called up next, but I'll put you to get our budget numbers in, put it into this.
I think we leveled the books and not the soccer field.
1575 is 1630 spent.
Showing 237%.
For the body rental.
Really?
Yeah.
And what did we do at Red Bull? Why are we so out of line there?
Not sure in Red Bull, but there's 300 budget in 1999, 98 spent. That could have been mulch. I know there's not been any upgraded as far as the building structures or anything.
Corey, let me tell you curveball out here real quick.
Gotcha.
I know that, um, per Senator Yeager, we were grossly underfunded on our T C R S and as they graciously passed, you know, we had a five-year plan to get called up on T C R S, right? What are we paying then? What are we paying per month to catch up on that?
You're not sure about catching none. But that T C R S over around 50, 55,000?
Joe, do you remember this? Uh, we were, um, this was right before you took over. Senator Yeager proposed the legislation to change T C R S for the whole, entire state of Tennessee because of the town of Oliver Springs, literally. I had made the recommendation as of us, I said on council, I said, is there any way to defer payment? Because we owed hundreds of thousands of dollars. We were underfunded by hundreds of thousands, about 350. And there was no way we could pay them one month's sum. So, Omar and Thomas went to Senator Yeager and asked them if we could somehow make deferred payments. And so, they literally, for the first time in like 15 years, changed T C R S. And that's when Hillier, uh, which is the state treasurer, jumped on a private plane, came down here and sat in our office with me and Thomas for an hour and said, who are you guys? And why did this happen? I was curious like what we pay now, uh, and how is that being paid? I'm assuming out of the general fund?
Yeah, cause that's where the rest of it, that's where it comes from.
Yeah.
How would you ever make up a deficit like that anyway? I mean, that's a, did you say 300?
It's a third.
The T C R S is the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System for city employees, our state employees that are elseful like teachers and T H P people and others. And the shareholder of the town's employees contribute by payroll deduction that the town has to match from. Now, what they do is they project the estimated contributions by the town and employee that are invested in the New York Stock Exchange and other stock exchanges and other types of commercial investments that, uh, are relatively safe and secure. And if you have a number of people that are projected actuarially, and that's an accounting word, meaning they project how much an employee will pay in over his lifetime and add up the interest and dividends and depreciation and value of the money that the employee has paid in as compared to him drawing out when he retires and his projected life expectancy. And what actually happens is that if the employee appears to have a great potential to live longer than what he has paid in, where he will be drawing out money that he has not paid in and the town has not paid in, the town is on the hook to cover that. Now, sometimes that can happen by the investments falling in value. Uh, and I'm not sure exactly what happened, I'm not necessarily privy to that detailed information. Probably public record somewhere. But, uh, uh, if you look at, look through the United States, there's a number of, uh, states that have not funded their retirements sufficiently and strongly. Another thing can happen is that if the employee pays in with a calculated withdrawal, say of $1,000 a month and then when he retires, he gets $3,000 a month retirement, he gets a huge increase. Then that messes up their, their payments in and calculations coming out. And the employer of that employee has to make up the difference. Now, specifically, while the town is short 307,000 dollars, I'm not sure. But I suspect that what I've said has a kernel of truth as to where that puts the town.
Well, where does this show up on our financial statement?
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at.
I haven't seen this.
Yeah. So, let's try to find that out from the moment tomorrow if we could.
Yeah.
See, so you remember, you know what I'm talking about? I mean.
Covid had a big impact because.
That may be true.
Stock market, uh, didn't do very well. And we were anticipating, uh, the state was anticipating a good return on those investments. And that return, uh, did not occur. In fact, it went down.
Yeah.
And so, we weren't, let's just clear, clear the air. We weren't the only town in this predicament, okay? Cities, counties across the state were in the same predicament. And just, it just so happened to be that Oliver Springs was able to get T C R S changed to alleviate the burden for all those towns and counties throughout the state, so.
So, at what point do we, did we, were we assessed an exact amount that we have to come up with? At what point did that happen? Or are you aware?
That's probably when the last actuarial study was done. And I do not know that, but that should be easy to run down.
Can you let?
And if that's just, if that's just happened like on your turn, I mean, it's going to be within the last year.
It was twenty, late 21, early 22, 22.
Correct.
So.
So, before you took off?
Correct, yes. I was, I was sitting, Reer sitting, yep.
Now, picking up on, former mayor Crowe said the stock market's at about 34,000. The stock market jumps up to 45,000, that's the Dow Jones Industrial Average. The town theoretically with the next actuarially study, as well as the other jurisdictions in Tennessee, could not have to pay that money in.
Correct.
Because the value of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System investments and holdings will far exceed the estimated payout over the next, uh, say several years. On the other hand, if the market falls from 34 down to 20,000, then every retirement system in the state of Tennessee is short money. It has to do with the economy.
Sorry for the curveball, Corey.
No, 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 no. That's while we're here. No, 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 that's while we're here. If you go to page four, I guess that will finish up your one-ten fund expenditures. And you are showing a six hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollar expenditures over revenue for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three. Going to the one-twenty-one street, State Street Eight Fund, that's page five. Total revenues were a hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and three fifty-eight. So expenditures were one hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and three cents, leaving eighty-one thousand twenty-seven dollars forty-five cents in that State Street Eight account. Page six, page one-twenty-three, that's your sanitation revenue fund. Collection, this is revenues, collection charges, one hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars thirty-three cents. Your budget estimate there was a hundred and seventy-two thousand, so there we're not collecting enough fees to cover Waste Connection's charges. Thus, your thirty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and seven cents transferred from the general fund. So that's where that hit out of the one-ten fund.
And where did that money come from?
Thirty-five thousand had come out of your one-ten fund.
Correct.
The general fund.
So going forward, let's just rehash this real quick time. What we're going to do to make sure that doesn't happen this year?
Well, I've given contacted, you know, Waste Connections. Now it's collecting water bills, water sewer bills. You know, that's kind of, that's kind of up to us. Now, that does go back to where twenty-two, twenty-three, we're only collecting, you know, seventy-six percent of your water sewer bill sum. So right there is your, there's your shortfall.
Yep, okay.
So once you go back to full of meters, which we have done this past four or five months here, it's full of the meters for non-payment. I mean, you just, we have to get, I mean, we're repaying regardless every month.
Do you know what our current collection percentage is per month right now for water sewer?
I do not, right off.
Okay, that's fine.
Page seven, your one-twenty-seven fund, this is your drug fund. Total revenues, twenty thousand nine hundred and two dollars seventy-nine cents. Total expenditures, twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. That leaves eight thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars point six cents in your drug fund to start the new fiscal year. Four thirteen, this is your water and sewer fund. Page eight, your metered water sales. You only collected ninety-six percent of your metered water sales. If you look below that, you only collected ninety-six percent of your sewer, sewer charges. Now, big thing, thirty-seven one ninety-three, your Dillis sewer charge. This is where a lot of our TAP fees and a lot of other fees were hitting in our own account. We've got that stuff fixed. Now, if you do look at thirty-seven one ninety, other operating revenues, budget estimate was twenty-five three seventy, actual was three hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars sixty-two cents. There's a three hundred and five thousand dollar payment, that was your ARPA payment that hit right there. So that's been transferred out to where it was supposed to. That would leave you, so that was a one-time hit right there. So that is, that account should be correct. Now, we did certify the, the new water sewer rates to date and kind of clarified, fixed some of the errors that we had with inside the city versus outside the city sewer charges. And a lot of that's, you do see some anomalies in here, it's because, and this is, this is nobody's fault here, it's just when we went to the next-gen software, a lot of the charges didn't get changed over to where they were going to hit in high places, so that has been worked out. Your expenditures, well, your total revenues is two point four nine million, two point four four nine million. Expenditures, purification, this is your water plant, four hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, transmission distribution, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so that's, that's twenty percent under budget. Now, your purification, the reason it was over budget, that goes back to our wages. Right now, you have four people that work at the water plant, and six people's wages were being charged to purification instead of the transmission distribution. So a lot of that stuff has been worked out, where the right amount of employees is hitting transmission, distribution, purification, sewer collection, sewer treatment as well.
But these numbers that we're looking at right now are not, these numbers were before the adjustments were made.
Yes, ma'am, before, these were your, your F Y twenty-two.
And that's going to show up on our audit, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We're going to look pretty bad.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, a lot of this stuff right here, I mean, you're going to show journal entries.
Right. But the main thing is we can't straighten it out.
Yeah, yeah. So we're going forward though for the new fiscal year, everything, you know, worked out. So page nine, your total expenditures, two million three hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Now, that does not have any of your, well, that does have three hundred and five thousand that hit under your other operating revenues. So if you do, that's three hundred and seventy thousand dollars expended for your lower revenues for twenty-two, twenty-three. That three hundred and five was in grant funds. All right, let's go to our next packet. Financial statements for your general fund, everybody should still be in order. This is your actual bank statements for your general fund. Cash balance as of July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, in your general fund is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars fifteen cents. Another thing to look at there is your interest paid for that period, you get, you did gain a hundred and seventy-three dollars fifty-four cents in interest. Year-to-date interest on that account, one thousand ninety-four dollars and three cents. Now, look at your interest rate right there, half a percent. Local government investment pool, that's where we need to take as much money as we can afford to put in that account.
Go up five percent?
It's close to five percent right now. So we just, we just need to capitalize and utilize those types of things to gain as much money as we possibly can. Page two, this is your payroll account. Ending balance, thirteen thousand three sixty-eight ninety-four, same situation with your interest, interest paid for this period, six dollars eighty-seven cents, interest paid year-to-date, thirty-eight dollars sixty-nine cents. Now, we cannot do that with payroll account, so that has a status. Page three, this is your H R A, your health insurance account. This has to do with your, your task account where our, or maybe our health insurance, your deductibles are a thing of five thousand dollar deductible. And the employee is responsible for the first five hundred dollars. This account right here pays for the next forty-five hundred per employee. And if you do have family coverage, employees responsible for first thousand covers up to nine thousand dollars. So that, that's a good benefit that you offer as a town. So this is, again, your general H R A account, ending balance is July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, is eight thousand dollars, or eight thousand sixty-seven dollars sixty-three cents. Hey, the next page is your gas fund. Ending balance as of July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, one hundred and sixty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars twenty cents. Interest paid this period, sixty-six dollars eighty-seven cents, interest paid year-to-date, three hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Next page is your drug fund. Ending balance as of July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Interest paid to date per this period, seven dollars forty-eight cents, year-to-date, forty-three dollars and seventy cents.
Cory, can you back up and to anybody at home listening, what is the gas fund?
That's money you receive from state, of state taxes.
And it's not the same as the, the highway fund, correct?
Correct.
So how does that differentiate?
Well, it's just your gas tax received, it goes to this fund here, under your State Street, everything else is separate. Let's go to the next page, it'll be your water and sewer funds, you have this packet Again, this is your bank statements for your water and sewer funds. Balance, July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Keep in mind, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of this is ARPA funds that has to be removed from this.
Correct.
And this goes back to Ramona and myself, need to go to one bank and open that account just for those ARPA funds.
I know this is as fun as watching paint dry on a wall, but it ensures integrity in the process, and everybody sitting here knows exactly what we know. So Cory, I think some people in the audience may be having a tough time hearing.
Second page is your Water Works payroll account, ending balance, this is June thirtieth, seventeen thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Third page is your H R A, this is for the water department, again, this is your task account, ending balance, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, eighty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Your last page is your water department, this is your rural development account, this is where your rural development debt is paid out of, ending balance as of six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three, is twelve thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-one cents. Anybody have any questions about the bank statements?
You guys need to get that changed over and get that ARPA money moved, so we don't have to stay or somebody on our back.
Any more questions? That is all I have. Mr. Miller?
Not this time, sir.
Mr. Brown?
I was commending our workers, we're, now that the weather's lapping up, they've done a good job of mowing. Also up here at the four-way stop up here, it's just discretion to see all them cars. If it's supposed to be a garage, it'd go like a junk vehicle. And I'm ashamed to think we advertise our account for forwarders as being a tourist attraction to come down and see that. Is there something we can make him put a fence up or something to that effect? Because it does look real bad. And it, you know, it's not helping the beautification of the town. And I'd like to see something done, I mean, if they can fix them, you know, fix them, most of them have been sitting there for the last six months, no longer. And there's more like something that ain't never going to be fixed.
Which intersection, where you're talking about?
Up here at the four-way stop, outside by Ruby's down.
Yeah.
So it is, it is a terrible way of advertising something to, for somebody to see all that. And the guy got a business, but he ought to be able to, to put something to better looking than what he's got, except all them junk cars sitting there. If we can do something with that, I'd appreciate it.
Here's the example that I use, and I've used this once to business terms. I pass by Volunteer Audio, Volunteer Breaker Muffler, it's a very well-kept business, very well-kept business. I wish that was shared by others, let's just say that. I agree, Mr. Brown, but Ms. Van Hook?
I wanted to address Chief Laxton, if I may. I'm impressed with your officers. I've met several of them, they're doing a great job. And I wanted to ask you how things were going in the school zone, because you were, you were struggling last week, is it improving for you?
Well, before he gets up here and answers that, come on. Facebook post was made today about Chief Laxton taking O S Academy Bull Bottom Horns and correcting our problem, so thank you, chief, but go ahead.
We met with both of the principals. One thing that a lot of people get confused of, with the combination of Auburn Springs Middle School and Auburn Springs High School, they're still two separate entities, but they're calling the campus Auburn Springs Academy. And that was one thing that kind of set people in the direction. So myself, with our police department, we got with the S R O and both principals discussing the traffic issues. And we kind of told them about taking the high school traffic on Kingston Avenue and what we had on Ron Street, and we basically combined it in our downtown residential area, couldn't handle it. Several ideas were thrown out, several ideas were kind of given back and forth. And so I know when I spoke with our chief Bailey, the route they have chose is one that they had back in the nineties, where they have separated the middle school and the high school traffic again. So the only thing on Ron Street now is middle school only traffic. High school traffic is going into the high school parking lot and picking the kids up next to the fill house, coming down that new breezeway where they're, you know, have the new sidewalk toward and things of that nature. So it's kind of separated them again. I know we've discussed school zones, that now makes Kingston Avenue to continue to be a school zone. We're looking at what we might do on the Ron Street side, but we haven't really come to any decisions, I'm going to talk to the mayor about it first.
So basically, you need three officers at least, because you've got Norwood going at the same time, right?
Yes, so one of the first things that Mayor Stilner had brought up in, when Mr. Dent was on council, they wanted to have us to help kind of alleviate, because we only had two officers on a shift. Both officers were in the Norwood school zone, no one was pulling cars over and writing tickets. They had brought me the idea of getting that crossing yard. We're not going to be able to find somebody that'll work of an hour of a morning and an evening. So that was when it was discussed, to use our codes enforcement officer, give him a little bit more money, have him come in at an earlier time to do that with us. So that frees up one officer. So what happens of a morning when we have school zone started at seven-thirty A M in Norwood? I have our codes enforcement officer and a police officer flagging traffic. I have one roving basically to write tickets and check for infractions. If he gets a call, he gets pulled off, or when it's time for Ron County, he is going by himself. And Ron County's been gracious enough to allow an S R O there to help us. So you have Officer Barger, and then you have one of our officers trying to tackle Ron County. And so it, it gets thin for just a little while. You know, I've been coming to the mornings and helping try to keep that one freed up for traffic or answering calls. So far, it's working, but if we have a sick or if we have a vacation, it throws everything off training, it makes it tight.
So they're transferring Brent Barger over too?
Yeah, so when it combined, they were only using one for both schools, but now that he's at the one, he's having a block off the bus route, so he's basically making sure no one's coming from Kingston Avenue into the school, and our officers are handling the traffic coming in from Ron Street.
Do you think this is going to be able to be sufficient, or do you foresee an need to try to work, to get another officer?
For the time, everybody's being patient, it's even like we had one of the assistant teachers post on Facebook here recently, we're able to handle it right now. If it gets worse, or if our population goes up, we'll readdress it, but right now, we're able to handle it.
My other question for you was, I believe you have two officers right now per shift, is that, am I correct, you have two officers on duty?
Yes.
Every shift?
So the way we're set up right now is you have four shifts, because they work twelve hours. All four of those shifts have two. That being said, I have basically at that point, myself, Captain Owens, and Detective Lewis is what kind of floats, but because we still have one out on live duty, Detective Lewis is actually, I guess for probably about the past five or six months. for probably about the past five or six months has been on a patrol shift.
If you had your comforts on in Oliver Springs, how many officers would you have on shift?
Minimum of three. Uh, the problem with that is, is when you try to schedule training, vacations, uh, sick, anything that can happen, court, getting them out of too many hours with overtime, adequately, you have to have at least three on shift because right now only running two per shift. If one officer has an arrest and he has to transport them to Clinton to jail, you have one officer in the town. If he arrests somebody, you have no officer in the town.
And I do want to publicly thank Sheriff Jack Stockton and Chief Deputy Timmy Phillips for allowing the SRO to help downtown. That was a gracious, uh, um, move on their part. And also leads me into this, the, so Rome County is vastly different than Anderson County when it comes to school zones. Anderson County, they buy, maintain the school zone signs. Um, Rome County, it's up to the city to buy or purchase or whatever, uh, school zone signs and all that. So with the new academy and it has been brought to my attention about having a larger school zone other than just Kingston Pike or Kingston Ave, Kingston Avenue, I apologize. So, you know, at some point we may have to look at adding additional streets and either reducing the speed limit to, what is it, fifteen miles an hour, Chief? Uh, with, when, so you don't have to have a flashing sign or the city will have to invest in flashing signs. Um, so you can indicate when school is in and it goes from twenty-five to fifteen. Um, that's the end of year there, but it is something that we possibly will have to address in the weeks and months ahead of us, so.
Maybe that's something, Corey, should go ahead and take a look at just to kind of give us an idea about what that kind of signage would cost.
Correct. Yeah. And we might be able to reach out to the SRO coordinator for Rome County. I can't think of his name.
There might be.
Yeah. They, there might be signage available, uh, in reserve that when other cities rotate stuff out, still good, still usable, but, um, so maybe even look at that. Ms. Van Hook?
That's out.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
When is the, uh, new planning program starting?
It should be November, is that correct?
I had to give a ninety-day notice. Three month.
Yeah, it should be November the first.
The November meeting, yes.
Yeah.
And, uh, is that when we're gonna? I think you showed us a couple of sheets about the Airbnb and all that stuff. Is that something we'll throw in the planning first before we?
I know that's something that we've been discussing at advanced meetings.
Right. And we're gonna cover, maybe do something good for the first planning meeting, maybe?
So we, we have an ordinance, uh, in place. Uh, is that what you're?
Yeah, well, we're kind of still haven't designated how many we got. And I think we're still missing a few or, I know, in this following and that kind of
Yeah. Chief Laxton has been great about following up on those.
Yes.
Um, and he's gave me updated list.
And what we have to do with the updated list is just go and contact, make sure that they're on, so we're collecting hotel motel tax front of them, so. Was it Mac who did the list for us, Chief?
No, I was in the.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. Okay. So.
And, uh, could you touch on what happened, uh, out, water outage in Kellytown? I guess some people was asking me what happened, I guess.
We did. Um, and that's what we kind of talked about earlier. Um, earlier this week, we had a leak underneath Highway sixty-one. And that's what, yeah, that's what they were working on today. And they was able to remove a twenty-five, twenty-eight foot section of two-inch galvanized pipe from, from our system. Uh, they were able to push another two-inch PVC or poly through and a three-quarter inch tube been through that casing. So, I mean, we're, we're removing galvanized pipe, you know, every chance we get now. So that, that was the reason for the outage today. So that was kind of emergency, so that kind of come on fairly quick too.
So I guess people need to understand, I guess, that, uh, when it's a big pipe, it's gonna be a big area, I guess.
Yeah. And it's, and that's, that's an issue with an older system is there's not a lot of valves in this system. So in order to isolate a small section, I know they had to, they had to turn off.
How many, thirteen, eighteen?
Tuesday night when we did, we had to turn off thirteen and today I think we got it down to five.
Really? Yeah, it was bigger than last week. When was that you said it? What, at six?
It was Tuesday.
Yeah, it was Tuesday night. It was the first one. And then we went back out today because it started leaking again and finished, finished fixing the button. We got, we got it down before we only had Patrick Kelly turned down this time instead of all of kept down.
About eleven thirty.
Yeah, thank you, Teddy. That's, thank you, Mr. Hall. Chief Laxton?
I just have two quick things. Uh, the first thing I'm gonna bring to your attention is something I talked to the mayor about and then I was able to talk to Mr. Miller about. We've been having some parking issues in certain areas, especially like with what we were talking about with some of the Airbnbs. And then we recently had a new complaint in a small section of town on parking issues. One of the things that I've found in our city ordinances, and it's not been kept up here lately, um, just for the fact we've not had the problem in town, uh, in town with the commercial vehicle parking. So in City Ordinance fifteen, uh, dash eight thirteen, it says that the chief of police can deem any areas not to have any kind of commercial vehicle parking or travel. I'm starting to compile this. If you know in your wards of any areas that you have issue, please let me or the mayor know. We're getting ready to start that list. Also, if you have any areas for residential vehicles that you're having issues with on Rome Street parking, that will be something y'all will have to make a motion and go forward with saying that there's no parking, kind of like y'all did on Winter Gap with that Airbnb. So I can enforce commercial vehicle without a council motion, but when it comes to, you know, private vehicles or any kind of on-street parking like that, that will be action y'all will have to take for me. So if you don't mind kind of making a list of areas that y'all have problems and bringing to us. The second thing I want to bring up is I know I've talked to yous a lot about the VCIF grant, the Violent Crime Initiative Fund. I'm ready to kind of start phase two. I talked to Ramona a little bit this morning about it. Uh, this is like I was telling you, it's a monthly reimbursement. Uh, we made the purchase, uh, in July for the laptops and the laptop stands. We've got all that submitted and everything. It's time to do phase two. Uh, this will end up being, uh, for the officers to have ballistic vests that actually tackle anything higher than a pistol caliber. Uh, for all of the, uh, patrol officers, uh, to be able to get the plate carriers and the plate carrier vest, uh, it's going to look at right around thirteen thousand dollars. The stated budget is to have fourteen-five for it. We're only gonna need to spend up to thirteen thousand. We're still taking in bids, but I do need a, uh, approval for that kind of high price purchase.
And this does get reimbursed pretty quickly, you said?
Yeah, they're done monthly reimbursements.
I'll make a motion.
The entire amount will be reimbursed?
Yes.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, there's no matching to this. This is a hundred percent. Uh, it's part of that seventy-one thousand dollars the state gives.
And for the?
You want submission to buy these bulletproof vests for less than fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for the state grant?
Yeah, or, um, Captain Owens got the bids, some of the bids in today and it's looking like we're gonna be under thirteen thousand for them, for whatever they make a motion to approve to.
Bulletproof vests, is that what I should put in the minutes?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion, we have a second, we have any further discussion?
This covers every officer, right?
No, it covers anyone that's in uniform.
Okay.
Uh, it will be a total of nine vests.
Nine.
Okay. Uh, myself, um, hopefully I won't be in the position to need it, you know, give and command and then Captain Owens already has his own and so it's gonna be for those or not.
You don't have a vest?
I have a vest. This is for rifle rounds. This is a stronger.
Are you comfortable not having a vest for rifle rounds?
Yes, ma'am.
You're sure?
Yes, ma'am.
How many years are these good for? They're good for a while.
Captain Owens?
Um, so the rifle rated plates are level four. Um, they are as good for as long as you can take care of. Um, the only thing that will, um, you know, diminish their life, um, is if they're not treated well. Um, but, you know, it's the equipment we have, our officers treat the equipment very well. Uh, so I have, these will last for a long time.
Will you stay with the town and we'll go with the officer if he leaves, huh?
Correct. This is equipment bought with the grant that belongs to the police department.
Is this a David wire thing or?
No.
Or this for a special?
No, the, uh, level four plates, they're, they're rifle rated. The, the plates that we wear, uh, normally on the road, um, is soft armor, um, it's light. Uh, it's not, you know, feasible for an officer to wear, uh, rifle with regular plates.
That's what I was getting at, I was trying to.
Yeah, for, for twelve hours a day. It, it's, it's a little heavy. I think the, uh, uh, the, uh, just around about weight, um, each plate's about four and a half to five and a half pounds, uh, times two, because you'll have one in front and back. So you're looking at, you know, ten pounds of weight just with the plates alone. So it's just for a short amount of time for active shooter, um, events or some type of incident where someone may have, uh, you know, more than a nine millimeter pistol, they've got a, a deer hunting rifle or something like that.
Yeah, it should like, oh, yeah.
I'd feel a whole lot better if David had one. I'm serious. I mean, you never know.
So what's the individual breakdown cost?
Do you think the hard point?
About a thousand dollars?
Um, a little over a hundred dollars. A little over. I think, uh, the, uh, for two plates, which each officer has to have two plates, the front and back, uh, we're looking at about mid-seven hundred on that, uh, average. So I'm still getting some bids in on those. Uh, and then the, uh, actual carrier vest itself, uh, is right at, um, a little over five hundreds. Um, but that vest is, uh, has three different, uh, sizes to it. So it's one vest, but it can fit three different sized people. You just have to change, uh, a couple of pieces on it, um, so it can be, you know, used again. You know, if we do have an officer that, that departs, maybe, maybe just in another agency or something, um, then that vest can be resized for another officer as well. So it's not a one and done type of thing like a, like a pair of pants that's, you know, thirty-two by thirty. Uh, this can fit multiple different sized officers.
Chief, if you would, go ahead and get us a separate price for another one, please.
Yes. Well, it's one of the things that me and Captain Owens has talked about. I have been more of an active chief than, than most places, but it's one of those things that it's, I've got to find reasons to withdraw myself out of these situations because I'm in the liaison between the other agencies and helping, you know, come up with tactics. So any way I can find with myself to keep me from getting involved in these situations and being on the leadership role, I need to. And I was kind of maybe, you know, in roundabout way using this is to give myself a reason not to go running in there with the rest of them.
I still think you should. Well, you never know, David, and I know you're gonna be the one there.
They're, they're trying to slow me down a little bit and I'm, I'm trying to do that. We've, we've had several situations this week where I've jumped right in the middle of it with them and I keep getting reminded by somebody, just stay out of it.
Hey, Chief, be careful. She'll call your wife and then you'll have a vest.
Yeah.
For sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Roll call Joe. You know, roll call it.
I want to amend the motion.
Oh, ooh.
I just think that, that if, if the chief wants to buy a vest, wants a vest, or if his wife wants him to have a vest, the chief should have the vest. Whatever that costs.
Okay.
I'll talk to the grant person if we end up purchasing another, we'll see him, because we're coming way in under budget. What about the assistant? Your assistant chief or?
Well, that would be?
Yeah. Need two more?
No, sir. I, I have, I have plenty of equipment myself.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. So let's just do that. Let's talk to the grant administrator and see if we could get one more since we are under budget.
Yes.
And I think that would be a, a good, a happy median solution here, assuming they say yes. If they say no, we'll come back and revisit it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the motion's saying we're going to sign, but we may, of course, the second vest may be something you could buy with your own authority.
Yes, correct.
Uh, roll call Joe.
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown?
Yes.
Reese Vanlon?
Yes.
Terry Hall?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Boy, you're up here. Uh, and you can tell the public about this. My wife's on social media. She gets your notifications like down here today on sixty-one where they, you're gonna have the road closed digging up the water line. If she gets all that, she gets where they're gonna be paving and patching. Uh-oh. Can you tell them what that app is and how they can download it on their phones and?
Yeah. So, uh, if you go to our town website, the aulersprings-tn.gov, if you'll notice on the front page, there's a section called Civic Ready. If you'll click on Civic Ready and sign up, you can sign up any phone numbers, any email addresses, and you will get text message alert. If the police department has something going on, if the water department, anybody that wants it, we put out alerts that'll text you, call you, and email you all at the same time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chief Bailey?
I have nothing.
Nothing this time. Any old business? New business? Sign the resolution for the participation in safety partners matching grant program. Grant is good for up to four thousand dollar. Grant is valid for safety items that prevent workers comp. Items include, included are safety signs, PPE, first aid kits, safety vests, et cetera.
This is one thing this week we've been working on and like I said, this is their insurance of public entity parkers. Uh, what you have a resolution authorizing the city, town, Oliver Springs, participate in the safety partners matching grant program. And we'll review that.
This is a fifty-fifty grant?
It is a fifty-fifty grant. Uh, it's a big two thousand, uh, plus two thousand a grant. Now, you also have these sheets here, this is what we're, uh, looking at ordering with that grants on the, uh, safety signs, uh, street signs. Uh, this is the forty-eight inch reflectable vinyl roll-up signs. Uh, currently, uh, we have the, uh, the heavier metal signs. Now, this, this is stuff they're just on the back of the trucks. A lot easier to put out, a lot easier to clean. Um, also looking at buying twelve cones, uh, reflective cones. Uh, and then two or three of the eighteen inch LED flash and stop slow handheld panel Uh, and then the standard eighteen inch stop slow signs. Uh, one of them, uh, Tony mentioned the other night, they were working and they, they wished that they'd had those lighted signs. So, I mean, this is coming at the right time. Uh, the other thing at the bottom is the overlay reflective vinyl signs. Working on state highways, uh, you're supposed to have the, uh, road construction, your fifteen foot, thousand foot and five hundred foot, uh, road signs out. And finally on the back, we are buying some more safety vests.
Cannot go wrong with safety, all I'm saying. It's a wor- worthwhile investment. So we need a motion and a second for this?
I have a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hook, for the motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, good.
A second? Any further discussion? Roll call Joe?
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown?
Yes.
Reese Vanlon?
Yes.
Terry Hall?
Yes.
All right. Long favor of the term.
Don't take many days. It's the last sheet that you have here. Budget has not been submitted to the state yet, wanna change the sanitation budget, I did not like that $31,000 transfer fee in that. So if you look at your refuse collection charge, that's your $34,410. $182,009, that's your $1487 times 10 for 12 months. Now, we know that we're probably not gonna collect that, but there will be a transfer. Don't want to put that in the budget. It's cleaner this way. And just speaking of, Ramona about this too, she's, she supports this move as well. So I'd like to change that orbit, orbit number 2023-08-10C, which is your 2023-24 sanitation budget.
So, yeah, so good.
As a point of parliamentary procedure, let's see, 2023-08-10C?
Yes.
That passed, showed $144,070. One shows $182,009, which one are you amending? Which one are you?
This is the new one.
Which is the new one?
$182.
$182, right.
Yeah.
Probably from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, if you're passing this budget, you now have two budgets, which one is the right budget?
Yeah, the 180.
Now, well, you know that, and I know that, and Cameron knows that, so when auditors look at that, $182,000 is passed second. Does that by law make that the proper budget? Or have we created a confusion about which is the proper budget? Will the real correct budget stand up because you've got the same ordinance number on both? So the second budget should be 2023-08-
We could change it very easily.
Or, or what, and it should say that it's amending 2023-08-10C.
That would be cleaner.
Yeah, it'd be cleaner.
Yeah.
Because, you know, auditors are even more picky than auditors.
Yeah, that would be cleaner doing, doing that.
Now, we could pass it with the understanding that it would contain the language that 2023-01017 is amending 23-08-10C.
Yeah. Correct. Did everyone follow that?
Yes. Good call, Joe.
Yeah.
Which number we voting on then?
2023-08, and we're gonna change it to -17.
17C or something?
2023-0817, amends 2023-0810C.
Will that call the rate, rate go up?
No.
That's a pretty good question, does the rate?
Not this year. Roll call Joe?
Did we get a motion and a second? I didn't hear one.
Oh, I am so sorry. Make a motion, do we have a second? Motion and second, any further discussion?
Robert Miller?
Roll call. Yes, sir.
Kenny Brown?
Yes.
Reese Van Hook?
Yes.
Perry Holland?
Yes.
Fast.
Now, with further ado, everybody in agreement for a German, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.